Okay, we are ready to call the Monday, April 19th, Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Commissioner DeBohm will be joining us briefly, but we're just going to go ahead and get started right now, a couple of minutes after 1:00 P.M. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's go ahead and jump into our action items. First, we will want to convene as the governing body of Deschutes- as the governing body of Deschutes County 911 Service District. And our first item on the agenda is a discussion of reinstatement of a fifth operations supervisor position to the Deschutes County 911 budget for FY 2021. Sarah Crosswhite, please join us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Sarah Crosswhite, Director of Deschutes County 911. I am here with you this afternoon to request for reinstatement of the fifth operations supervisor for the dispatch floor. In 2014, we had a fifth supervisor that was there to assist with administrative tasks as well as cover supervisor vacation. In 2018, we took that supervisor and promoted them to operations manager. So that was Chris Perry's position. And when we did that, we took that fifth supervisor and applied it to our systems and radio area. We were hiring there. We wanted to make sure we had the right staff, enough staff. So we put that position there temporarily and didn't backfill the fifth supervisor position. So my request today is to bring that position back. Their role would be, again, administrative tasks as well as working on the CAD system. We have about two big upgrades that occur each year, and having another supervisor to help vet that, go through the updates, train the staff, and assist in that would help us out as well as work on procedures and other administrative things that cover the operations of the floor. And we also discovered that with vacations of our current supervisory staff, that this fifth supervisor could cover about 70% of those vacancies. Any questions?
So Sarah, I like your analysis that it's going to take a couple of months to get this person hired, starting, what, the 1st of July, if you're really lucky? And then I was noticing you were down to five other unfilled positions. So you went down from six. So that's good news. How, do you still find candidates out there that are applying at this moment in time?
We are getting some that are applying. We have found that it has been a struggle less than normal. So right now, we have had 20 applicants that have made it through the process, and they'll, they then do the video interview. We bring them in for a sit along on the dispatch floor, and then we actually bring them in for the in-person interview. So currently, we're, we had one that just got a conditional job offer, and then we still have a couple more that we're going to be meeting with. So we're looking at all of our options. This has been challenging, a challenging time. So we're trying to figure out how to get the right people in the door and get them trained up. That's our goal.
Well, that's why I thought it was smart that you started now.
Yeah.
Because, you know, weren't you busier than ever last year?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's, and it, you know, it's not slowing down. It's been, it's been, it's been getting interesting around here. It just, you know, as the warm weather comes out, we have a lot more visitors in town, and the calls just don't seem to stop. So...
I could agree. I was in town Saturday evening, and there were a lot of people in town. So, yeah.
Is there a normal kind of, or a normal, you know, seasonal kind of variation in call volume?
There used to be, and we, it was really noticeable. 23 years ago, it was very noticeable. You know, night times, there was, you know, there was very rarely calls. And now it's, you just don't notice that anymore. It's just a small dip in the winter, and then just ramps right back up. So now we're just kind of saying, eh, you know, it's not like it used to be. Kind of steady all year round. So...
When you consider we have 200,000 people in the county, plus maybe 4.5 million visitors, you know, there's a lot of visitors on a daily basis.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yes, who knows how many days they average stay, but I can imagine that it's got to impact what your team is doing.
Well, you know, Commissioner DeBoe came and visited us last week, and when he was there, you know, we do our controlled burns, and our education, I think, is amazing. We push it out on social media, Twitter, everywhere you can see that there's going to be information on controlled burns. And while he was out on the floor, I think we received about 15 calls alone, just on the controlled burns. And you know what? People are concerned, genuinely concerned, and it makes sense. But they are, they're certain that that burn is in their backyard, and it's not. But, you know, they're seeing the smoke, and they're concerned as they're driving home. And, and so, you know, our staff fields those calls, and that just, that's one more increase of calls. And it's, you know, people don't believe it till they see it. And then, wow, that's a lot of calls. And, yep, we deal with that every day. So...
Well, the wind was blowing, I believe it was Wednesday afternoon, when the sister's fire was burning, and I was heading home, and it was, the smoke was unbelievable. And then the next morning, I think it had all settled on a couple streets and sisters. It was just like you were driving through cloud, but it was really smoke that had settled. So, yeah. It, you know, and I know it makes people nervous, too, when the wind is blowing if they're doing a prescribed burn. So, yes.
So, so when you, when there is a prescribed burn like that going on, and people are calling in, are you able to, kind of based on the location that they give, just say, that one's probably the controlled burn, so don't worry?
We verify to make sure that it's the right location. We check our maps, and because we plot them on a map to make sure that we have the right location, and then we let them know the size and what's going on. And, yeah.
Yeah. And then, on the chance that there actually is some other fire in their area, based on the information that you give them, they can sort of sort that out?
Yeah.
Great, right.
The good news is, you can sign up for text alerts. It's 888-777. And I get these wonderful alerts where the fires are actually going. So for those people who can have text available on their phone, please sign in, "Deschutes County Alert." Yeah, I get them on a, pretty much on a daily basis now.
Yeah, me too.
So, but I'm just saying, like, the more people, you would not get as many phone calls.
Yeah, very helpful.
So, so Sarah, you mentioned, kind of the, you know, it's not super easy to hire people right now, running this kind of higher level supervisor level position. Do you think that'll be easier or harder to fill than other positions?
So, what we'd probably do is we'll open up the supervisor position internally. We have a lot of staff that are qualified. So with that, we would then open up a telecommunicator call taker spot.
Got it.
And so that we, that would leave an open spot there, and those are a lot easier to fill, as people are interested to start at, you know, that level and work their way up.
Got it, got it. Are there, and for those level positions, are, are you able to find the people you need pretty much within region? Or, I was talking to somebody yesterday from the court system who said, you know, they're, they're hiring from way out of town to, you know, and people, people are trying to move here, and...
Yeah, it's a little bit of hit and miss. I think the challenge with people from out of town now is being able to move here. I think that's the struggle for people, is the cost to pack up and move here and try to find a home.
Right.
We do have a lot of people locally that have put in interest, which is great, when we have people that want to, yay, we want to switch jobs and try this, and this is our new career field, and that's great. But every once in a while, we'll get people that are ready to pack up, they have plans to move here, or their spouse is moving here, and so they're looking to relocate. And, you know, either one's great. You know, the biggest challenge for them is learning the geography.
Right.
Once they get here. So, but we all struggle with that. So, so many new streets.
Yeah, adding roads every day. Well, I just want to say that I, I support this position addition, and I think it'll help maintain adequate supervision on the dispatch floor while also allowing 911 to keep up with, you know, needed upgrades and system improvements. So it sounds like a very valuable and needed addition, in my opinion.
Commissioners, if I could just add to that, as Sarah has noted in her staff report, to the extent that they are able to bring this position on this year, salary savings ought to cover the budget impact, and potentially even next year, just due to the turnover and the fact that they're usually carrying some vacancies. But if that doesn't happen, and they are fully staffed, which does happen occasionally, we, not knowing the outcome of your decision today, we've already discussed the implication, financial implications of this position, added position in next year's budget, FY '22. As you know, we're finalizing the proposed budget for next year. And so we, this has been taken into account in terms of looking at the ability of the 911 district, which, as you know, is 100% funded by their own special levy. And it is possible, with, with some cushion, to fund it out of next year's levy rate. So Sarah's not proposing any increase in the millage rate for the 911 district next year, or even potentially the following year, just based on the healthy increase in assessed valuation that we've seen benefiting each of the property tax-funded operations of the county. So sustainability is an important question, and it appears that the district will be able to fund this position moving forward within the existing tax rate.
That's great to hear. And as Commissioner Adair mentioned, we're, we're now at 200,000 people, a growing community, needs consistently growing services, you know, especially in light of the increasingly steady and large call volume that 911 is facing at this point.
So do we need a motion on this today, Tom?
Yeah, a minute's motion, I think, would be helpful. The actual physical insertion of this position into the current year payroll system will come back to you in a, in a resolution, usually on consent. But I think a minute's motion would be good to get your approval.
Okay, I, I move reinstatement of a fifth operations supervisor position to the Deschutes County 911 budget for FY year 2021.
I'll second. And any further discussion? No? Call for a vote? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Vice Chair votes yes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
It'll be on Wednesday already? The resolution is out on Wednesday already?
Yes, it's on Wednesday.
I think it is. Yeah, it's on, it's on for Wednesday.
And if, and if we missed it last week, then let's make sure to, you know, to commemorate and recognize National Telecommunicators Week this week, and thank our, our 911 staff for the great job that they do.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello. Great timing.
Thank you very much.
We're going to now reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County for item two, and I'll, I'll go ahead and hand it, hand it over to the chair.
Great. Thank you so much. I do apologize for being late. Just got backed up, and I had to get from point A to point B. So at this time, Deschutes County Public Health Advisory Board, priorities, Tom Kuhn. We may have some advisory board members with us also.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioners, for having us today. It looks like all our advisory board members are on the Zoom now. I'm Tom Kuhn, Community Health Manager. And also, one of my favorite responsibilities that I have in my job is coordinating our Public Health Advisory Board, also known as FAB. And every year, FAB develops priority topics for which they would like to advocate in partnership with the Commissioners. And we started working in this way back in about 2019. Well, then last year, due to COVID, FAB wasn't able to circle back with you and to share their topics and work on their topics. But right now, we're trying to get back on track and kind of pick up where we left off. And today, our FAB chairs and member Dave Huntley are going to share the new priorities, share ways that action could be taken in these areas, seek approval for the priorities, and request guidance from you in how they might best proceed in putting these topics to action. So with that, I'll let our members introduce themselves, and I'll start with our chairman of the Public Health Advisory Board, Keith Windsor.
Hi, thanks, Tom. Yes, Keith Windsor, Chair of Public Health Advisory Board.
Thank you for joining us. Good to see you. Yes, we can hear you.
And go ahead, Dave and Rebecca, if you could just introduce yourself.
And this is Dave Huntley, also on the Public Health Advisory Board.
Thank you.
I'm Rebecca Berry. I serve as the FAB Vice Chair.
Hello. Thank you for joining us, all three of you.
Yeah. So there's a priorities document that we sent with the agenda packet, and we're just going to start running through that. And we'll start out with Dave Huntley, who's going to be covering the first item.
So thank you, Tom. Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to emphasize and support the CDC guidelines on the importance of wearing masks, even though we're well underway for the vaccine rollout. And, and the mask guidelines may be old, but they, they are still important. The vaccines are very effective, but they're not perfect. And so, as leaders of our community, showing your support for merit, wearing masks is extremely important, and that the proper use of over the nose, over the mouth, which we've heard many times, is much appreciated as we, we finish this up. And with that, I'll, with your support on mask wearing, I will turn over to number B, which is Keith Windsor. Thank you, Keith.
All right. Thank you, and thank you, Commissioners. You know, I'm here to talk about, in support of COVID-19 vaccinations. And I know it seems like this is all we hear about in the news, but it's currently probably the single most critical issue to getting our lives back to normal. As you're probably aware, with vaccine supplies increasing significantly, we're reaching a point where we'll soon have enough vaccines for everyone who wants one. The problem's going to be, there are many people out there that, for whatever reason, don't want one. And maybe you've seen the recent bulletin article that stated only 72% of St. Charles staff is vaccinated, and that 31% of Deschutes County residents say they are very unlikely to get a vaccine. Now, many of these people are not anti-vaxers, but rather, we'll call them hesitators, who just need assistance in getting beyond whatever barrier is holding them back. It's a top priority of FAB that we do whatever possible to get these hesitators their shots. And our approach, our approach to overcoming hesitation is threefold. First, educating the public, maybe through billboards, flyers, public service announcements. Secondly, supporting medical providers. And finally, encouraging and/or partnering with vaccination advocates. One such potential partner is Boost Oregon, an organization whose mission statement is, we empower people to make science-based vaccine, vaccine decisions for themselves, their families, and their community. And I'll speak more about them momentarily. And the second area that I mentioned was educating the public. You know, we can't really tell people what to do. They want to be educated, not indoctrinated. And how do we do that? Well, start by providing evidence-based information without judgment. For example, over 95% of doctors in the nation have received their vaccinations. Each vaccine clinical trial includes tens of thousands of participants. These trials have concluded that the vaccines have proven to be highly effective. The vaccines in these clinical trials were the result of over 20 years of research. Finally, you don't want to be unvaccinated. There are increasing concerns about long, the long-term effects of COVID, as well as new variants that are more virulent and can infect younger people. And finally, supporting, I should say, supporting medical providers. You know, polls show that the single most influential person on the subject of vaccinations is a person's doctor. We should support doctors counseling their patients on the benefits of vaccines. For example, Boost Oregon offers provider training, online seminars to assist physicians on how to do this and why it's so important. Finally, we're asking the Commissioners to consider encouraging and/or partnering with advocates of supporting vaccinations. First way of doing this, publicly, publicly supporting the efforts of Boost Oregon. This is the organization that I've mentioned that provides information through online seminars to educate the public, as well as tools to leverage influencers with programs such as Train the Trainers workshops and medical providers workshops. And finally, I might ask the Commissioners to consider supportive a letter to the editor in favor of vaccines, perhaps even acknowledging that they have taken the vaccine. And with that, I'll hand this back over to David.
Thank you, Keith. I appreciate that. I want to change, change off of COVID for a minute and, and talk about another very important factor is, you know, over the last year, we have probably delayed or ignored a health condition or an appointment. And so I want to make sure that the county is supportive and communicative to our community that if you've not, if you've missed an appointment, to go schedule it and not to defer your health any longer, you know, whether it be maternal-child health care, oral health, some preventative tests, ongoing follow-up care for chronic conditions, these are all important. Mental health, the latency concern, certainly if you're feeling that you have something you would normally go to the emergency room for, we encourage you to go to the emergency room. room. That our medical providers are now able to safely see people, and they're very well aware of how to see people safely. One of the things that Keith talked about, and I think he'll talk about some more, but that comes in with the child wellness and doctor visits. A few years ago, we had a program called Afix within the community in which the Public Health Department funded with some Pacific Source dollars, was able to go and seek out 24-month-old children that were behind in their vaccinations and be able to work with the parents and the providers and bring them up to date. And through that program, over a two-year period, they were able to increase the number of fully vaccinated 24-month children by over 7%, given the fact that we've had people moving in and out of the community, and we've had the COVID and the disruption in our normal vaccines. And child visits would urge the county through the Public Health Department to continue or reinstate this program and to work with community providers to make sure that our youth are properly vaccinated. And with that, I'll turn it back to Keith, which seems like we're ping-ponging, but he has excellent things to tell.
David or Keith, could you repeat the name of that program? Was it Afix or?
Oh, yes, I'd be happy to. It's A-F-I-X, A-F-I-X program. And it was, I think I have it here, the note says that it started off in August of 2016 and that there were 17 participating clinics. Tom, I think you were kind enough to send me some information. If Commissioner Chang would like that, we can forward you that information as well.
Please.
Okay, continuing on with our non-COVID vaccinations, that's my next brief topic here, and this aligns with Dave's previous comments about maintaining regular health screenings and medical care. Immunizations for non-COVID diseases remain critical, particularly for our youth. Children's vaccination schedules should remain intact, and don't forget your regular annual flu vaccination. Boost Oregon, there it is once again, has great resources for routine immunizations, including community workshops, video series for infant well visits, informational guides for parents and providers, pictorial flipbook for providers to educate parents in vaccine basics, and vaccine fact pack with information on every vaccine on the schedule from birth to age 18. And my last ask of the Commissioners is to consider again supporting Boost Oregon. And now I'm going to ask Rebecca Berry to speak on our last couple of priorities here. Rebecca?
Thank you, Keith. Okay, so we have two other priorities that the Public Health Advisory Board is hoping to work on with your support in 2021, and those are sexually transmitted infections and sexually transmitted diseases and pregnancy. And I'd like to just give a little bit of information about both of those. So the data that I'm going to share with you on sexually transmitted infections and diseases comes from the Central Oregon Communicable Disease Report from 2020. So in Deschutes County in 2020, chlamydia represented 49.6% of all communicable disease cases. Gonorrhea continues to climb in Deschutes County. This is concerning because gonorrhea is increasingly becoming resistant to antibiotic treatments. 10- to 29-year-olds represent the largest percent of chlamydia cases in Deschutes County, over 76%. COVID-19 could be impacting health-seeking behaviors, which may explain the decrease in the number of communicable diseases being reported. And that's concerning, actually, for two reasons. The high person-to-person transmission rate of STIs and STDs like hepatitis C, chlamydia, and gonorrhea, those are very highly transmissible. And so if people are not getting treatment or getting tested, those could be continuing to be spread very quickly. And health complications associated with hepatitis C, chlamydia, and gonorrhea can be very concerning if left untreated. And regarding pregnancy, I'd just like to give a couple more stats. So in Deschutes County, 8.7 pregnancies per 1,000 occurred in females ages 15 to 17 years old. There are roughly 20,000 females under the age of 18 in Deschutes County. So this means about 174 pregnancies occur per year for females under 18 in our county. Pregnancy and birth are significant contributors to high school dropout rates among females. Only about 50% of teenage mothers receive a high school diploma by the age of 22, whereas approximately 90% of women who do not give birth during adolescence graduate from high school. The children of teenage mothers are more likely to have lower school achievement and to drop out of high school, have more health problems, and be incarcerated at some time during adolescence. In addition, evidence-based prevention programs, sorry, in addition to evidence-based prevention programs, teens need to access youth-friendly contraceptive and reproductive health services and support from parents and other trusted adults who can play an important role in their lives. Not completing high school can be linked to many negative outcomes, such as low wages, poverty, and limited employment opportunities. Women with a bachelor's degree, in their course of their lifetime, earn $630,000 more, and women with graduate degrees earn over $1 million more. Ben Lepine Schools recently approved adding access to birth control in their school-based health centers. They joined Sisters School District in this decision in Deschutes County. And two actions we would love some support on from the Board of County Commissioners are just helping us to support school-based health center efforts to provide reproductive healthcare services in alignment with their school contracts. And then also helping the region to relaunch a campaign called Ask Anything, which would support access to reproductive health services and planned pregnancies among women and men of reproductive ages. Thank you.
All right. And well, that does conclude our presentation today outlining this year's priorities for the Public Health Advisory Board. We'd like to thank the Commissioners for the opportunity to come in today and present. And we'd like to take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much for the presentation, the advocacy work that you are doing. I know that in the past, it's been nice to get around the table over at the Health Services Building and really communicate amongst yourselves and be able to, you know, kind of bounce ideas off and, you know, get coordinated. So now we're in the COVID times. I'm sure if you've been able to meet, it's been over Zoom, just like you're joining us today. But the message is clear, you know, the COVID-19 considerations and really advocating for, you know, vaccines, you know, which you started off with there. So, you know, I've been very supportive of, you know, advocating for vaccinations in our community. You know, there's a lot of information flying, a lot of, you know, knowledge being built real time as a worldwide pandemic happens. But I want to thank you very much for, you know, studying the topic and being good advocates for our public health also.
Actually, Rebecca, at the Health Council meeting the other day, we were talking about the vaccination rate was so low. And so when I got, during that meeting, I'd sent a message to Whitney in order to do some kind of a billboard or something, supporting, okay, please, make sure your children's vaccinations are up to date. We really don't want our herd, our vaccinated herd, to get any bigger than it already is because I know it's a problem here and, you know, it's really critical. Do you happen to know any numbers that you can share with us? What are we looking at for, okay, the 24-month? How many people, where are they at vaccination-wise? Or Keith, do you have that kind of a statistic available? Because I do want our community to be aware that they need to follow up with their kids.
Rebecca, would you, I do not have that information. Rebecca, do you?
Give me a second. I'll pull up the most recent data that we have.
Okay, yes, I just think it's so important. And then I think, Keith, you said that 31% of our county was hesitant regarding getting the COVID vaccination?
Well, according to a recent bulletin article, 31% of Deschutes County residents say they are very unlikely to get a vaccine.
And that almost matches what didn't get the vaccine at St. Charles, doesn't it? It's really close.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
Well, you're right. That's true. 72% have been vaccinated at St. Charles, so you're right. It's pretty close.
I know. It is fascinating. I do believe all the Commissioners are going to be vaccinated, so yes. It's, you know, as I was touring the vaccination event the other day in Redmond, I met a couple, like retired dentists, and they said, oh, I'm just here, I want us to get back to normal. You know, he was giving the shots. And, you know, that's why our booth, our fair exhibit for the COVID vaccinations has been so successful. It's been such a great community outreach. People seem to be so appreciative and, you know, hopefully, what is it, we're down to 16 today, that 16-year-olds can sign up and get their vaccination. So we need to get up to 122,000 in Deschutes County to make our herd the proper size. So let's hope. It happens soon.
Commissioner Adair, I have your information here. So two-year-old immunization rates through the end of 2020, in the region for Medicaid only, because this is how we're able to track it, it looks as though that rate is, let's see, childhood immunizations are 72.5%, and adolescent immunizations is only at 32.3%.
Adolescent, what age does that cover, Rebecca?
Let me look that up. I don't have that right.
I mean, that number seems really quite frightening. If you're saying only 32% of those people have been vaccinated? Okay.
Yeah.
That's quite frightening because I know there are people in our community that are vulnerable, that can't get those shots, and, you know, and we really don't want to bring back things like mumps, measles, rubella, chickenpox, all those other great things.
I can look this up if there's any other questions. I'll stand by while I'm looking this up.
Thank you.
If there's a, if I can make just a brief comment, the numbers are for fully vaccinated, so that means all vaccination. So if somebody misses a vaccine or chooses not to get a vaccine, one out of the numbers that are part of the fully vaccinated, they would fall in that smaller category.
And does that include flu shots, David, or is that kind of in the optional category?
That would be more in the optional category. These are generally recommended vaccinations for children and adolescents.
So that adolescent measurement is for adolescents in the 12 months prior to their 13th birthday? And the components, the actual vaccines that they're considering in that is, I can never say this one, meningococcal?
That was very good.
And then, yep, so those three are the ones that they're aiming to get for adolescents.
Going, switching gears back to the COVID vaccines, I wanted to share that I finally got my first shot on Friday, and I just did a social media post this morning, so it's, it may, it might have a little bit more reach as a letter to the editor in the paper, but doing what I can. And there's, you know, I definitely share the concerns about these personal responsibility behaviors, mask-wearing, getting vaccinated, and, you know, the hesitant or resistant people in our communities. And I, you know, I would be, I would welcome hearing any additional recommendations you all on the FAB have about how we, you know, how to break through with people who are either hesitant or resistant and, you know, specific actions or things that we can do in Deschutes County. They, you know, I was jotting down as you were talking, you know, a letter to the editor, Would be interested in hearing more about Boost Oregon and whether counties are, is that the kind of organization that counties join, or is it more like individual-based membership, or is it like medical professionals that, you know, join Boost Oregon, or how exactly that works?
You know what? Boost Oregon is a new, frankly, they had a representative come and speak to us, to our FAB at our last meeting. I think Rebecca, I believe that was a referral from you, wasn't it? And so our dialogue with them has been somewhat brief, but they really seem to be exactly the kind of organization that is set up exclusively to promote vaccinations, both obviously now COVID-focused, but also for the non-COVID vaccinations. That's how they got started. It isn't a state-based organization. However, I think all of their information, their training videos, everything is aimed at the exact same audience that we would be targeting here in Deschutes County. How we, you know, I mentioned them several times because, again, that's really not FAB's expertise, but yet they are the experts, and they would be, it would be a great organization to consider partnering with in order to really, you know, like I said, use their expertise to come to, to help us educate the public. For example, they are publishing flyers that address some of the more critical points that hesitate, excuse me, that hesitators are running into. So these are handouts that, you know, could be distributed to, you know, libraries and other high-volume areas that people would have access to. We've talked about billboards possibly. I don't know what the turnaround time for a billboard might be to address hesitation for COVID vaccines. There are a lot of PSAs out there already, so that may be redundant. But Boost Oregon, and again, I don't know whether, you know, when I communicated with our representative, she said anything the county could do to promote Boost Oregon would be helpful. I don't know if financial support is a consideration or not. As a nonprofit, I'm sure that they would be more than willing to consider that. I don't know how you folks feel about that. But that's a great opportunity to hit the ground quickly by partnering with someone like Boost Oregon. That addressed your, kind of, your question on that?
I'll do a little homework. Thank you. Yeah.
But it was mentioned the herd immunity, you know, understanding that concept, getting up to a high number of people vaccinated in our community, really being able to slow the spread. I mean, that is it. And I think of it as one-on-one conversations, knowing somebody that, you know, has the vaccine, and I was able to get my first shot on Friday also, so this is just turning the corner right now. The community, it's open up to anybody and everybody. So getting it out there quickly is the value, too. And you learn this, you know, talking to our, you know, Health Director, the fact that if we can, you know, tamp this down and stop it now, we're not going to possibly be having to deal with this for generations. you know, decades at a time where there's different variants and, you know, different responses throughout the community. So it's very valuable to work hard right now to get that herd immunity. And as I say, I think of it as one-on-one conversations with, you know, family, friends, and acquaintances at this time. Well, thank, anything else?
I did want to ask about the Rebecca's mention of doing, you know, having more interventions and prevention activities at school-based health centers and this Ask Anything campaign, and I just wanted to ask the nuts and bolts, and Tom, you might, you might play a role in explaining this, of how concepts like that might get actually translated into, you know, program activities and, you know, somebody, like responsibilities being assigned to somebody's FTE and, you know, how we actually take a recommendation and translate it into an operation. Or you can also just say, well, we would do some homework and come back with a suggestion on how to do that, but that those were, those, I was interested in those recommendations and learning more about how the county would make those things happen.
I'd like to make a comment that in 2019, I actually had a map from Deschutes County that they'd prepared of all the counties in a, actually, there was a map from 2000, and most of the counties in the year 2000 were white, and in 2019, a lot of them had gone blue, dark blue, and just showing that map to all the county commissioners, I actually got them to vote for the bill at that time. So, you know, those kind of things where you see it in blue and white and you see what has happened with our country. Vaccinations, according to my husband, the retired doctor, has been one of the most incredible, impactful medical discoveries that has saved millions and millions of people's lives, and I think so many people are forgetting this, when you look at like polio and things, when you hear that these are diseases we do not want coming back, and, you know, just like something like that, it's clear, anybody can see it, and what a difference, we're really probably not going the right way with all the hesitancy for our kids. So, yeah, I really appreciated that map, and it was impactful, and the room actually did vote, and this last spring, we had a vote on a different, but a vaccination measure, and clearly, it had gone like, it was like 55, 45. So, we need those maps when we're talking to our fellow commissioners. They're very impactful.
Commissioner Dare, thank you. It sounds like the visuals are really helpful with conveying some information, and we can certainly help you provide, you know, provide that. Commissioner Chang, going back to your question, you know, the Ask Anything campaign was a regional campaign that was funded through Regional Health Improvement Plan dollars. I've actually put a link into the chat, I know you can't see that, but I'm hoping Sharon will be able to capture those three things. So it's just a little more information on Boost Oregon, Afix, and the Ask Anything campaign. We're hoping that regionally, we'll be able to continue funding those in various ways through Regional Health Improvement Plan dollars, but, you know, a lot of that work also lies within public health, and I'm sure Tom can speak directly to what that might look like.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioners. We really appreciate you taking the time to spend with us today. As I, we had said earlier, this was kind of us getting acquainted, reacquainted with you and our priorities, and that way, it enables the Advisory Board to move forward and taking some actions. So, you know, we'll, as Commissioner Chang had asked for, we'll come up with some specific action items, and we will circle back with you and go through all the proper channels to make sure we're all on the same page before moving forward with anything.
Great. Thank you very much, great seeing you. Thanks for being part of this effort at the Public Health Advisory Board here in Deschutes County.
And I do think we have funding available for a billboard if something could be put together sooner than later for the vaccination, for COVID vaccination. I don't know if anything is out there, but, yeah, sooner than later would be great. So, we should talk to Whitney about that and see, but I think we had something like 40,000 in that available to us a year ago.
Yeah, maybe we could rummage through our vaccine hesitancy survey data and pinpoint exactly where the right billboard location would be to reach the most people.
Yeah, that's great.
Just the clue where the traffic always has to slow down on 97. Yes.
And thank you, thank you all members of the Public Health Advisory Board for your attention and focus and advocacy efforts on behalf of the public health of our community.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. At this time, item number three, Deschutes County Treasure and Finance Report for the end of March, January, February, March, the end of a quarter also. Hello, Greg.
Hello, good afternoon, Commissioners. On your agenda today is the March Financial Report, it begins on page number nine, and for the record, my name is Greg Munn, I'm the Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer for the county. So, I am, I'll share my screen here. There we go. Okay, so on the Treasury side, the portfolio at the, our cash portfolio, investment portfolio at the end of March, had about $241 million in it, you can see that in the upper left corner there, that table, and all of our investments were within our category maximums set by policy, and those are outlined here under category maximum, you can see that as well. Our portfolio balance of $241 million is about $15 million, less than it was last month, but $15 million more than a year ago. And I think I've mentioned this in a prior board meeting, but I'll go ahead and do it again, because it might have been a while ago, but the normal expense rate for the county on average, month-to-month, it changes depending on other activities, property taxes coming and whatnot, is about $11 million a year, a year, I'm sorry, a month. So, this month, we drew down about $15 million, which is a little bit more than average, but in other months, it'll be significantly less than average. But just thought I'd give you that number as a, as a number to, as perspective to look through as we talk about this on a month-to-month basis. So in terms of earnings, interest earnings, the net interest earnings of the county was about $170,000, that was about $7,000 less than that last month, which again, isn't surprising. And you can see it's pretty significantly different from the amount we earned in March a year ago, March of 2020, about $186,000 less than last year. Year-to-date, we're at 1.9 million, year-to-date last year, we were at 3.4 million. In terms of yield percentages, we, the LGIP dropped from 75 basis points to 60 basis points on March 1st, and I wouldn't be surprised if we see that 60 basis point number drop again as well. Overall, the yield for the overall pool is at 88 basis points, and that's down slightly from 91 from last month. And I think that's all I have on this page here, we're, our maximum maturity is 4.6 years out, and our weighted average is just under two years, which just also happens to be our policy maximum is two years. The next thing I would just point out, I'll use some graphics I share with you on a month-to-month basis, but there's nothing here, other than probably just the distribution schedule. Again, we try to balance the redemptions over the course of the five years, so that we have sort of a regular cash flow coming in. That would assume that all things are being equal from investment period to investment period, but as we all know, the market does some crazy things. For example, right now, the short-term returns that we could buy today are near 0%, and then the curve steepens significantly in the three-to-five-year timeframe. Unfortunately, we're full out there, so we're not really doing any investing, even though we have these gaps to fill here. We'll look at those hopefully more when the yield curve turns to something that's a little more normal. And then the next page, page 11, is our listing of all of our investments, and just one thing I'd point out here, if you look to this yield to maturity column, these are all sorted in maturity order, so the ones that are maturing the soonest, that will be redeemed, are at the very top, and the ones that are not scheduled to mature until later are towards the bottom. But you can see that those that are maturing right now, just these top five or six through the end of May, we're earning a yield to maturity of two, over 2%, sometimes over 3%. And that compared to, scroll down to the blue item here, on the one that we just most recently purchased, this FAMCO, the return is about 22 basis points. So pretty significant difference between what we're able to buy and what is maturing out of the pool.
That's pretty sad, isn't it?
Well, the goal is to keep it positive instead of negative, right?
Yeah.
At least we haven't lost millions of dollars, I will say that. There are people that do lose money.
Yeah, that's the number one important thing, is to not lose the money, right? So, things are going well, we're doing as well as we can, given the market and the constraints of the investment, the investment policy, so there's no complaints there. And we work with a bunch of great brokers that are super helpful, and, you know, they do this sort of thing every day, so they're a real hand for us. Okay, on the next page, page number 12, I just wanted to give you a couple of data points on just updates that are going on in the finance office. One thing that we've talked about quite a bit is the American Rescue Plan. We have, we were told $38 million coming in our directions in two tranches. The first one should be received by May 11th, and that would be $19 million, and then the second tranche, another $19 million, would be within the next year, so by May of 2022. And as I sent you an email out last week, I'll be scheduling a work session where we can start to talk about priorities, categories, procedures, and really just get our feet underneath this in terms of moving forward in light of the fact that the dollars should be here pretty soon. We're also working on funding for the Mass Vaccination Center. We had a couple of options there, one was to go directly through FEMA, and the state through OHA came out and offered local governments the option to be a contractor of OHA and claim the reimbursement for the vaccine center through them. This turns, has turned out to be what appears to be a less administrative, a less administratively onerous task to go through OHA, and also allows us to claim some expenses that we wouldn't be able to claim if we were going directly with FEMA. So we'll be moving in that direction. I'm pleased to announce that we hired a new accounting manager, Jana Kane, comes to us from a local public accounting firm, and has years of experience. I knew Jana years ago when she was an auditor, she's a CPA, CIA, Certified Internal Auditor, and she has her MBA, so we're pretty excited about her, and she's just a nice person as well. RoomTax software, we implemented a software package through Tyler Munis a couple of years ago. It wasn't a specific RoomTax software, it was a module that we attempted to make work as RoomTax software, and it hasn't done that very well, as well as we'd like. We've had to spend a significant amount of staff time to force it to work, and it's also, hasn't been real popular with our customers. So, we've done a fair amount of review, I think we had three options that we looked at, including one from the state, and are pretty excited about the, this new software called UniRevs, and we're on track to have it up and running on July 1st. So I'll come back to you, and as soon as we have the chance to get some data points, I'll come back to you with a little report and let you know how that's all going. And then, earlier, as you know this, we had our budget committee meeting last week, Health Services, and as Tom mentioned earlier, we're in the process of wrapping up our proposed budget. Pencils were down today, and we're actually having a little meeting tomorrow, and we're in the process of putting the proposed budget together to be distributed later in May to all of you for our Budget Week in June. All right, scrolling down to the general fund, we can start getting into the budget real quick, and I just have a couple of highlights. So this is the general fund, and looking at this dashboard, just a couple of points I'd want to make, year-to-date, resources, this green, I'm sure what we call this, a speedometer, there's a term for it.
Rainbow.
Speedometer?
Looks like one of the colors of the rainbow to me.
Rainbow, okay, so the green rainbow, $43 million.
Yellow and green together.
Yep.
And then we've got a little purple for Washington.
We'll work in some orange and black too, for Beaver fans. So, resources in the general fund, $43 million, that's 114% of our current budget, and as I've mentioned before, this is largely driven by CARES Act funds that we received earlier in the year. There's also been some impact on, because our property taxes, our collection rate is higher than what we originally budgeted, and based on all of the refinancing activity, our clerk's office has recorded more fees than they had expected to originally. On the requirement side, we've spent $35 million, 88% of the budget, last year at this time was 72%, so you can see as a percent of budget, we've spent a lot more, and that again, is largely due to the distribution of those CARES dollars that have come in. So they came in on the revenue side, and we distributed them out on the requirement side. That's general fund. And on to the position control report here, I'm just going to scroll down to the very bottom, this is page 14, and this, our number, our FTEs as of the end of March is 1,042.69, that's an increase, or not 1,042, those are, but the sum of those two is, total FTEs is 8.1 more than at the end of February, and those were all, 8.1 were positions that were approved by the board, including 1.1 FTE in the stabilization center, OR in community development, and then one each in the sheriff's office, solid waste, and facilities.
But community development still shows 55. It showed 56 for February and 55 for March.
Right, if you look at this.
So, you're saying it's in the six that haven't been filled yet?
Haven't been filled yet.
Okay, that's where it came from, all right.
Yep. Good catch.
No, I was just like.
Commissioner Dare, I always, when I'm looking at these reports, I'm always wondering what number you're going to catch me on, so I'm.
Well, I asked Tom this morning, and I'm like, okay, I forgot, okay, good.
Keep this on our toes. Okay, a couple more things, I'm going to scroll down, I'm going through the overall county summary, and to the bottom on page 18, this is just the projected ending fund balance for all county fund, when you roll everything together. So we're projecting almost $174 million ending fund balance, you can see that number compared to the 133 that we'd budgeted. The 174 we're showing now is a little more than $3 million, more than what we projected last month. So, as we get closer to the end of the year, staff is, across all the departments are really good about honing in both their revenue, the revenue projections and their expense projections, and so, as we get closer to the end of the year, these numbers become And so as we get closer to the end of the year, these numbers become closer and closer to what we think the year is going to be. All right, and if you would forward to page 35 in your packet. Just pointing out a couple more changes here. This is the Fair and Expo Fund, 615. This is the operating fund. So one of the big changes from last month, you'll see this events revenue line here, this projection of 1.1 million. These, this has been updated this month due to increased in revenue projections due to the Mass Vaccine Center and also, which is paying rent to the fair, the Expo, and the court, courtroom, which is also paying rent to the, so we aren't recognizing those two revenue sources until now. And the positive impact is really at the bottom, that's what we've been watching for the Fair and Expo. They're projecting now an ending fund balance of $876,000 in the year. Then on page 43.
Oh Greg, I just want to note, you did go by Solid Waste, but that is an economic indicator for Deschutes County, and it, the revenue, resources was at 79% with the year-to-date 75, so it's ahead. I just want the community to be aware of that.
It's nice to see those numbers reflect the message that we've heard Mr. Shinkey report back several times over the, I guess, the last 12 months or so, since the pandemic has been with us. So yeah, that's, that is true. So, okay, so my last comment is on page 43, and this is our 705. So this is 911. You heard Sarah Cross fight earlier today. And just a couple of quick updates here is the bottom, I'm going to start at the bottom here, but the fund balance projection for the year has, from last month, has increased by $400,000. So it was about 8.3 million last month, in last month's report. And the reason why we're projecting it up is largely due to these two line items here, the police RMS users fee, revenue projection, that was increased this month by 300,000, and then the data network reimbursement has been increased by about 62,000. Those two are tied to the Tyler CAD radio system, their participants, the revenue from participating agencies is fed into these two revenue lines. And based on updated costs of putting the system together, they've gone back and updated the revenue from partners at the same point, so we're now seeing this revenue increase in the 911 fund. So those are the significant changes from last month. Are there any questions or anything I can answer for you?
Greg, is there anything you wanted to say about health benefits, Fund 675 on page 42? I noticed the projection is, it's only, what, 9%, over what we originally budgeted?
9%. Oh, the projected fund balance.
Right.
What I can tell you, and it's not, I don't know if it's going to be reflective in the question that you're asking specifically, but we are looking at, we continue to look at the long-term financial projection of that fund with the goal to bring the fund balance down to a, the policy level, which is around $8 million that the board adopted, approved. And so year-to-year, we're making a dent. We think we're going to reduce the fund balance this year again, and we'll project to continue to do that. So we bring that down slowly and at a rate that is sustainable with as least impact on our departments in terms of cost as possible.
Great, that's what I wanted to hear.
And Commissioners, that would be, once again, as it is each year, a subject of a policy discussion with the Budget Committee come June on looking at those projections into next year and beyond, how that affects our premium rates that we charge to departments. We're holding them flat as a starting point in the FY '22 budget, which, you know, has a, you know, points it in the direction in terms of the fund balance that we'd like to see it go. But we've been doing that for a couple of years, and the fund balance never seems to drop substantially. And, I mean, that's a credit to the health of our employees and their use of things like the doc and the pharmacy and our wellness program and so forth. So it's a good problem to have, but it also, you know, affects our ability to bring that fund balance down over time. So we'll be looking at options and framing those for the Budget Committee to discuss in terms of even a reduction in premium rates as a possible option. And all, the other very nice thing about that is that it, along with the per savings that Greg has, you know, led the discussion of the last couple of years, the increase in our labor rates is pretty low compared to most organizations in terms of the inflationary increase each year. So it's pretty much limited to, you know, things like cost of living allowances and merit increases and those sorts of things. So again, a good problem to have, but we will be having that discussion here in a couple of months or six weeks.
Ted, I would just chime in and add one more quick thing here. First off, Tom is exactly right, you know, in my previous positions, we would expect anywhere from 9% to 11% or more increase in our premiums. And so, you know, as you can imagine, 9% to 11% every year, year over year, that really starts to add up on top of each other. So we've been fortunate to be able to hold this flat. And then Commissioner Dyer, you asked about, we're talking about the reduction in fund balance. Actually, if you look at that projection column, right down at the bottom, you can see that our resources over requirements, there's a minus, a negative 1,273,015. So right now, that is the projected amount of fund balance that we will use this year in starting to bring that fund balance down. Now, we had projected 1.7 million, but we're now, we had budgeted 1.7 million, but we're now looking at about 1.3 million. So it's going in the right direction. It's just something we don't want to go too fast. We want to make sure it's measured, and we get there with, like I said earlier, in a stable way without disruption to anybody in that process.
Great, any other questions?
Greg, I had kind of like a really big picture question. So these last couple of months, it seems like our, our investment, our investment returns are, you know, they're pretty modest and doesn't, it seems to be going in a direction of becoming more modest even. And I was wondering, we, at the same time, we also know that we have these substantial facilities and capital opportunities, you know, things that we're thinking about doing. And I was just wondering whether the modest investment returns, whether that actually affects the way that we think about those capital projects, whether, you know, whether we might say, well, you know, this money isn't doing us that much of good sitting in these accounts, so it'd be better to go, you know, to do, you know, that one more capital project that we were thinking of doing? Or whether we, you know, do we, do we, do we connect the two things in that way? Or do we not think about it that way?
Yeah, certainly. The, first off, what I would say is, the value of the entire pool is, is really spread out across, you know, several funds and several operations across the county. So although it's, when you pull it all together, it's a fair amount, but having access to those funds to be able to do something significant would require, and we can do this, we can borrow from ourselves, that's certainly an option, we've done it before, and it's, and it makes sense. But it's, but those dollars, I just want to make a point, that it's spread out across the county. In terms of, does it make sense to have that conversation? I think it really does. And, you know, rates are historically low right now, and including borrowing rates. So do we lock up our funds that we, you know, internally loaning to, from department to department at a certain rate, probably knowing that the rates are going to continue to go up, at least the rate of return on our investments? Or do we lock in external borrowing at, you know, a certain rate? Yes, I think there's a lot of conversations we had around it, but that's a good way to look at it, it really is. There's two sides of it, you know, do we use our cash and give up interest earnings, even though they're very meager right now? Or do we borrow at a certain, at a low rate in the debt market? Good conversations to have.
Thanks. Okay, thank you very much for the financial update for the first, first quarter of the calendar, or third quarter of the fiscal year.
Good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Item number four, discussion of board assignment for Facility Project Review Committee. So this is kind of the first time we're asking for some brain space around this. Eric, yes?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. Also joining me is Lee Randall, our Facilities Director. Recently, the Board gave staff direction to move forward, forward with the expansion of the Adult Parole and Probation Building. And also, I'd like to add that Ken Hales, Community Justice Director, is joining, joining us via Zoom as well. Recently, the Board gave direction to staff to move forward with the expansion of the Adult Parole and Probation Building. The Board also asked staff to evaluate ideas for input that the Facility Review Committee could have to the Board on this project. The Board made it very clear not to slow down the project, so staff worked with the architect and construction firm to look at options for the Facility Review Committee input. There's a draft memo, and I'll have Lee walk through the handout that will help give context to these, these areas of possible input. It'll help visualize.
For the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director. And there we go. So I'll walk you through briefly the site plan and floor plans, so you have a point of reference. And then in the draft memo, which you have, there are four specific items that we can scroll back and forth between the various plans to discuss and look specifically at So in terms of just orientation, the current addition option that's under discussion is shown here. First of all, with the existing site plan, and you see an outline of where the proposed addition would go. And so the parking, as you see here, and the other features of the site are as they currently exist. So the new site plan, as you can see on the front of the building, proposed addition, which would be two stories, and then some additional parking on the side. This is a rendering of the main lobby entrance with the new addition out to the west side of the building, with the entrance generally in the same place, but with an entrance to the new additions separately so that either other folks from the Public Safety Campus or the public, as well as clients for PMP, are able to enter there without entering the rest of the building for the first floor. We'll touch on this in a minute, but this is an example of potential exterior finishes. The first floor plan, this shows primarily program space for adult parole and probation, as well as a multipurpose room, large conference room, that could be shared for other countywide meetings or activities, but also gives a place for larger group meetings. There are restrooms on the first floor as well. And then a second floor addition, this is primarily probation officer space. To the right, you'll see a gray area, and we'll talk about that in a minute as it relates to the draft memo. And that is a space that could be either finished currently, or it could be shelled in use for future use. And Ken, as well, can, can talk to the staffing implications for that. And then finally, this shows the second floor renovation scope of the existing building, an existing second floor, which encompasses the central, center area where the current reception area and administrative staff work. And then finally, we'll touch on emergency power as it relates to the, the memo as an option for, for staff. At this time, do you want to delve more into the memo, Eric?
I guess I'll ask the Board, would, at this point, does the Board have questions? Or would the Board like staff to walk through the four items listed on the draft memo?
Does this building have emergency power?
It does not currently have emergency power.
It doesn't? What about Courtney?
Courtney does.
Courtney has it?
And it's limited, in the case of Courtney, it was installed after the fact, after the building was built. And so that partly drives the discussion related to emergency power in this case, because as the addition is built, it would be probably a better opportunity if we were going to install emergency power, it's a great time to do it, rather than adding it after the fact.
Okay, then, I was wondering, the one portion that you were saying, well, should we do it now or later, do we have a projection on what the cost would be if we did it now? Or is that something you're going to talk about?
I can look at that as we, and try and get that answer. We have some basic cost estimates, there would be a cost savings, but at this time, we hadn't delved deeply into asking the, the construction firm to provide hard analysis. We would, once we have that direction to consider that, we could make the effort and take the time to do a more specific cost analysis of the exact amount of savings. And that information could be shared with the Facilities Project Review Committee. But as we're talking here, I can glance through and see if we have a, the current estimate.
Thank you.
So there's four items in the memo, I'm just kind of looking at and thinking about the question right now, where do we proceed? We can talk about each one of these. And so the, the decision space, any decision's going to be a function of dollars, as in, something's going to cost more or less than another choice, every one of them. So I guess, you know, for a Board, what's our kind of mindset going into about these things? Because as I say, generator, you know, that's X amount of dollars, you know, my, and then I was thinking about, well, and we can get through each one of them, I was just referring to the financial effect of these decisions.
And part of the dollar cost is to evaluate the maintenance costs and the long-term durability, so those are all factors the Committee would take into account? And the operational needs of the department? Would the Board like us to go through each one of these?
Can I ask one remedial question first? Can you remind me, who is on the Facility Review Committee and, and kind of what their charge, what their charge is?
Sure. There are seven or eight people on the Committee, they're residents of Deschutes County, and it's a mix of people from different backgrounds. It includes an architect, includes somebody with construction management experience, project management experience, project, project management experience in the public sector. So the, the Board at the time really wanted to get experts from, from different areas. So that, that's who makes up the Committee, it's seven or eight individuals.
So a little bit of history on that, there's, there's always a big jump from single-floor or two, single-floor or two-story residential construction to commercial construction. And so then it's, when you get to that, it's just a shocking number, like, oh my goodness, how do we get from a, you know, you think of a $250,000 house to a multimillion-dollar building that's not that much bigger in floor space sometimes? So that's one of the, the concepts that we see as elected officials. And then the other choices of, how can we make it cost less in the big picture? And then what's long-term maintenance, you know, commercial building, you know, public front-facing door with people walking in and out of it every day is just different than residential. So it's really getting some expertise on justifying the expense of these commercial construction projects, government projects.
And also, the Committee, at the direction of the Board, can provide input earlier in the process. in the process for, you know, other projects. One of the memo that went to the Committee upon its inception is, is that they may provide development options, giving input to the Board about whether or not we should build new, buy, or lease, also review and refine conceptual proposals. They can help give input on the type of contracting we go forward with, whether or not we do design-build, or construction-manager, general contractor, review costs, and also perform some value engineering input.
And these are, these are just all-star volunteers who are willing to share their expertise so that the county can do its business better?
Yes, yes. We did quite a bit of public outreach, and interviewed a number of candidates, and really have an excellent Committee with a lot of, a lot of people very knowledgeable in different fields, and can be a real asset to our projects.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Any thoughts, Commissioner?
No, I'm very thrilled with the people that, you know, applied, and I think our Committee is excellent. So I, it never hurts to get feedback from people that are actually doing this on a daily basis, and I think that group is. So, looking forward to hearing from them.
Great. Commissioner, Derek, just to address your earlier question, these estimates are several months old, but the potential cost savings could be in the neighborhood of $120,000 in not finishing out that shell space that's identified on the second floor. Those costs could obviously change and be adjusted, but that kind of hopefully gives you kind of a range of potential impact of whether or not to finish out that area.
Okay, so it would save $120,000?
Correct.
Okay, but what is it going to cost to do it?
Well, that would be, so if we were to not finish the space, there would be $120,000 savings as opposed to finishing it. So around $120,000 is the current estimate. To divide, as you can see in the illustration, let me go back there. So as you can see in the illustration, in the area in gray, there are some offices that are identified in light lines. So the difference would be whether that's left for future finishes, or those offices were created and built out currently as part of this project.
Okay, so you think they can finish all that for $120,000?
That was the estimate that was provided to us.
Couple months ago. Okay, all right. Thank you. How tall the ceilings are in this, this second floor?
So that hasn't currently been completely designed. The existing building has roughly 10-foot ceilings, 10 to 11-foot ceilings. So it would likely mirror the existing building and be in that range.
Okay.
So you'll step through the four items, then?
Yeah, we're already jumping into them.
So, item number one, exterior finishes. I'll go back to that. So the current building has what is referred to as, excuse me, EFS, which is short for Exterior Insulation and Finish System. And one thing the Committee could consider would be whether to match the existing finishes, or a second option would be to install fiber-reinforced cement board. There are some challenges to consider with EFS. Historically, there have been water intrusion issues, although there are some benefits in terms of insulation and the finish itself. So that's something that, if the Board directed, the Committee could delve into those details and make a recommendation.
So is that a standard finish that's on there now that can be reproduced, you know, the existing building to the new building?
It could be, and that's the Exterior Insulation and Finish System, or commonly known as EFS. It's not as common as it was when these buildings were constructed. So there's some challenges with finding the contractors to do the installation, et cetera. So those are some of the details that could be reviewed.
Well, and that's exactly a detail that could be reviewed, because, oh, we just saw these guys do this over there, and we know that the subcontractors are out there for it. We'll get more than one bid on it. I mean, that's the domain of the discussion right there.
Right.
I like it. Okay.
So would the discussion be to take the, take this EFS finish off the rest of the building and redo the whole thing, or just whether the addition is going to match or not?
So, currently, that is a maintenance issue, given the age of these buildings that we're facing with both juvenile detention and adult parole and probation. As you know, the Sheriff's Office is in the process of replacing EFS on that building. So long-term, certainly, it's something we're looking at and beginning to look at pricing. And that's one of the downsides of EFS, is that it has proved to have issues with moisture over the long-term. And it may not make financial sense to match the existing if, in fact, for maintenance reasons, it needs to be removed in the future.
So what normally is its life?
That's, that's a kind of a difficult question. It can be recoded. It can be repaired. The campus, generally, those buildings are at about the 23, 24-year-old mark, depending on the particular building. And we've done some repairs in the, you know, in the nine years that I've been here. We've done repairs at juvenile. There are other areas that are needed repair currently. So it's something that can be maintained and repaired, but then, if you have underlying moisture issues, that's where you get to the question of making the decision whether to completely replace it or continue to repair what you have. And those are some, you know, those decision points, we haven't completely worked our way through when it comes to juvenile detention and the remainder of the Adult Parole and Probation Building. Cyber, or fiber-reinforced cement siding is a good option. Currently, it's probably one of the leading options if you have a framed building with plywood sheathing that most folks would consider. So the, that's exterior finishes, item number one. The second area, as we touched on a little earlier, is the second floor shell space. And the decision point there might, would be, as I mentioned, finish it now, finish it later. Certainly, it's going to cost more down the road to finish it, but there would be savings in the short term. And if directed, the Committee could delve into that question. The contractor and architect could provide more specific pricing information and analysis for their review. The third item, emergency power. There are, this is an area where certainly, we would want PNP to weigh in, and once we finish with the slides, certainly Ken can step in and offer some, some information in this regard. It's something to consider in that, as I mentioned earlier, if you're going to add emergency power, at the time of new construction is a good time to do it, and it's least invasive, most cost-effective. And so, it's something worth considering now. And then, delving into the details of that, then you have questions of, would it be propane-powered, natural gas-powered, diesel-powered? And there's a range of considerations with each of those options.
So I would always think of interconnecting the electrical system. So, you know, going as far as basically prepping the building for that connection, because I know that, you know, generators can be portable. You know, this one looks like it's kind of a permanent ground-mounted item, but just like out at the fairgrounds, I know that, you know, when we think of that as an emergency operations center, if, you know, long-term emergency operations need to be happening, and there's no utilities, if there's, you know, just that big old connection on the building, that's a lot easier than having to run extension cords. And so, I mean, I'm just, you know, that's my mindset on that, even if we don't justify a generator, some interconnect opportunities is a good way to design it.
And with, once that decision's made, that impacts how you design the building electrical system.
Yep.
What panels are there, making choices about what systems within the building are on in emergency power. And so, you're absolutely correct. Just providing the connection and designing emergency power into the system doesn't mean you have to install the generator at this time. It could be just prepped for a portable connection. Yep.
Are we, are we anywhere near the point where people are thinking about battery backup, like large battery systems, instead of having generated, you know, like having a backup generator? Or is that still, is that still a ways out?
The short answer for me personally is that's not something I've done a lot of research into. I'm sure it's on the horizon, and that there are folks who are thinking about it and talking about it, especially as we look at the sizes of batteries that are being installed as part of solar installations. And on a building level, that's, that's a question we could do more research on and get more information on at the building level. We certainly use battery backup on a small scale in most of our buildings for various systems, like security systems and fire alarm, and computer systems. But on a larger building scale, it's some information we could follow up on, though.
Is it, is there any, you know, with the, with the public building, solar requirement? Is there, is there any solar generation in the Public Safety Campus at this, right now, at this point, or?
So we do have solar generation at the 911 facility. It's mounted on the, on one of the buildings there. So we have that current installation. And then countywide, we have installation at the fairgrounds as well.
Right.
Actually, a couple of installations there.
Yeah.
So it, that's something as we go forward in design that can be considered as well.
Great, thanks.
I'm going to go back on our slides at this point, and the final item on your list is stormwater drainage design. There are a couple details that I'll share. So if we look at the new site plan, anytime we add any hard surface, whether it's a roof or a parking lot, we have to accommodate the stormwater drainage.
Question?
Yes.
When you say new site plan, new relative to what? Just context?
So I'll go back. Here shows our existing with parking, and then an outline of the building. And so, new site plan would show the proposed addition there to the...
Site plan relative to if that building was there, this is the site around it?
Correct, yes.
Not the second version of the new site plan, I guess, is what I was trying to clarify?
Yes, this is not a revised, it's new as opposed to existing.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And so, three, in short, kind of three options. One, connect to existing drywell. Actually, let me flip to my notes on that. Okay, so what we're calling option number one for storm drainage would be to create a swale or pond at the back addition near the building. So the area, I'm not sure if I have a, I don't think I do. The area in orange, kind of a courtyard that's formed by the addition near the building, that could potentially be a retention pond area, and we could look for other areas on site. So one option would be to try and locate a retention swale or pond near the building. Second option would be that there are existing drywells in place, and connecting to that existing drywall after testing was done to confirm and calculations to confirm that it could handle the additional runoff. And then the third would be a construction of a new drywall, allowing that we're able to find an area on-site that would accommodate a new drywall per code. So it could also be a combination of those. And then, delving into the details, the kinds of things that the Project Review Committee could review, would be comparing costs, looking at regulatory compliance, code, what's feasible, and just to kind of delve into analysis of those options, and then provide a recommendation for the Board.
So a drywell is always going to have long-term maintenance and costs and requirements, so a retention pond would always be a preferred option. Would that be correct?
And many, and the long-term maintenance, that kind of applies, you know, to each of these items under, under question or scrutiny. And because that always becomes a factor, which is the, the one thing as a Facilities Department that we want to look closely at, is what's the cost over time versus what may be saved in the short run, so. So that takes us through the four items that are in your memo for consideration, and I'll turn it back over to Eric and Ken for any additional information.
On the Facilities Committee, is there a landscape architect as well as an architect, or somebody with what that kind of background? Yeah, the stormwater piece, I definitely, I have, I have a little bit of background. I have a lot of questions, but, you know, depending on, depending on the nature of the impervious surface that you're creating, I mean, if, if you're, if a lot of the water is rooftop runoff, I mean, there's actually, you know, opportunities for water capture, you know, and usage for landscaping purposes or things like that. And particularly, if you already have, if it's sort of like, you already have a very large rooftop that's running water down, and then that's going to a drywell, and you're adding additional rooftop, like there might be opportunities to, you know, capture, you know, like a thousand feet of, a thousand, I jotted this number down, a thousand feet of roof in a, in a climate like ours, you know, that could generate, you know, 7,000 gallons of water a year, something like that. But if it's, if it's primarily parking, you know, parking lot runoff, then, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to try and capture and store that water. But, but the roof water is often, you know, there, there's opportunities to use it as a resource and, and not have to dig another drywell. So I would, you know, if, if a substantial amount of the stormwater from the overall facility is, is roof runoff, I would love it if people could, could look at that as well, or kind of consider that as those kinds of options in, you know, in here, alongside the additional drywell or the pond or swale.
Okay. We could add that to kind of our sub-list of consideration.
Thanks.
So a question for Ken Hales, and maybe Tanner, that second floor build-out area, any, any thoughts going into it, as in, would you really be advocating now because of the need, or you're just trying to set up for future needs, I guess? You know, is that clear from your point of view?
As far as we're concerned, I think the need is not imminent. The changes in law have caused us to reconsider how fast we're going to grow. So it may be more driven by the cost value of doing it now or doing it later, more than the urgency of getting it done now.
Okay. And having an open space maybe gives future flexibility also. And this will be the discussions at that Committee. I was just trying to see if there's any other discussion items.
I thought Lee, I thought Director Randall did an outstanding job of explaining these variables. They're very technical. I'm eager to see what the Committee comes up with.
Yep.
So is, for that second floor, is it possible you might want to use it in a completely different way in a, in a few years if, if you don't build it out now? Or is it going to look like that eventually, and it's just a matter of, you know, whether we want to pay the cost to finish it now or later?
My guess is that eventually we'll finish it out. What may occur is that some of that space may be used by some other tenant on the Public Safety Campus temporarily, until we occupy the rest of the building, if there's some transitory need by some other department. But eventually, it'll be office space for, you know, as, as the Committee grows and the department grows.
One thing I've noticed in my years as County Administrator is that unused space never stays unused for very long.
Well, so that was, yeah, another realization, that somebody might say, oh, I could use that. And then, but there may be a partnership in building it out there too, possibly, so. Okay. There you go. One of the realities in the world. One of the realities in the world. Any thoughts, Commissioner?
Okay, so that's about 1,386 square feet over there that we're talking about. Maybe not, according to what Ken just said, it's not eminent needs. I'm just wondering how large those offices are, Ken. I can't, the PO offices like 17, 18. I just wondered what the dimensions were. And will those people, are people still meeting and coming in and meeting then? Is that happening now? Are, are you guys meeting your people with Zoom?
Well, in response to your first question, I don't have the, the floor plan in front of me, but the offices in the, in the older part of the building are smaller than county standard and the offices built out in the newer section are closer to what county standard is. As far as the traffic in the building, that has resumed, but that is still reduced because of COVID. Kennedy's, what do you want to say?
That, that's correct. We're still seeing our high risk in some of our median risk populations and doing intakes and so forth. So we're still seeing people and doing electronic monitoring hookups and so forth.
Thank you, Tanner.
Okay. Well, yeah, I want to thank the committee and you've been prepping for this committee discussion. There's some good items on there. This may be a time where we have a few projects coming in the future also. So this is kind of practice and what kind of feedback we can get from an expert group that volunteered to give us some feedback.
So do we need a motion for this letter to be sent forward?
Yes, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so I move we submit this letter to the facilities project review committee. The letter is presented as of April 15th, 2021.
I second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick question. Would the commissioners like to attend the meeting? If so, I could, we could schedule it around your, your calendars. We'll, we'll notice it as a public meeting either way since it's a committee of the board, but wanted to check.
That'd be excellent.
So my thought is if it fits right into my schedule, I'll be there. If not, it might not be the priority of the day, but we'll find that as it comes together.
And we would, this would, so this would be out of our regular meeting cycle, but we would publicly notice it if, if more than one of us wanted to attend or?
Publicly notice it either way, but it would be out of the, it would not be a regular board session.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I can't guarantee that I'll be available, but, but I definitely have an interest. So if it, if it works out, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, are there any other items not on the agenda?
Well, I did, I did listen to the, to our call on Saturday for the Ways and Means, hoping to make a comment, but they didn't call on, I think about 98 people that were on the call. It's really unfortunate the way, you know, I remember addressing the Ways and Means at the fairgrounds a couple of years ago. Such an opportunity and it's so sad. They take so much time into Zoom. Where are you? Come in, come out. They lose a lot of time and, but the comments were great. There were some excellent speakers from Descheds County that were talking about CASA. You know, Holly missed her time because I called her after she was available. So that was unfortunate, but I know she sent a letter and I just heard from several state police officers about the shortage that I've testified about before. And of course, it's just as bad as ever. And there were some great conversations. Mountain Star had representatives on the call. There were, there were, it was quite amazing how many people from Descheds County did participate. So, but it was way, way too many people for the amount of time. They only recognized the mayor of Pendleton, if you can imagine. That was the only political person that was allowed to speak. So, yeah.
A lot of, yeah, a lot of things coming at them at the same time in Ways and Means right now.
Yes.
Did they, did they share out any information or was it mainly?
No, they really, they said.
One person after another giving testimony.
Yeah, they said they wanted to hear from non-politicians. That's about what the first thing Representative Rayfield said, even though they'd sent an invite. And so that was one of his, and I'm like, well, you know, I always really appreciate hearing from people that care enough and are there and, you know, stressing for their issues. Someone did shout out for the Student Success Center at OSU Cascades. He was a veteran and that was great to hear because actually that building is not in the, what is it? Senate Bill 5505. So it's not there. There's another OSU building, but the Student Success Center should be there. The students have, you know, they are going to front $5 million. 25% of the actual cost of that building, it's for counseling, veteran services, you know, all kinds of very important things. So I'm hoping that we can get that added with the extra funding for my conversations with a couple legislators.
Any other updates? So since we've been together on Friday morning was our legislative meeting, was the last time we were together.
Yeah, no other items. I, I mean, I, as I mentioned when the Fab was visiting with us, I, I posted, I posted pictures of me getting vaccinated on social media, which, you know, maybe that'll help a little bit with somebody deciding that they want to get vaccinated too.
There you go.
We'll see.
We'll get those numbers up. Senator Finley called and just he was advocating for the accessory dwelling unit bill that had passed the Senate, so he was, you know, proud of that effort. And so he did call me and mention that, I think as a, a point of accomplishment in, in this legislative session. It's only one of the chambers though, so we're going to the other chamber at this time, but.
It's looking.
Yeah. Yep.
I actually mentioned that I had my behavioral health meeting Friday at noon and, you know, one of the things they're always talking about is lack of housing. So I said, well, I go, we have this enormous opportunity to build accessory dwelling units up to 900 square feet and maybe some of the illegal ones can be made legal. So, you know, it's, it's a huge opportunity. How long is it taking for our state? And we, what did we have, 4,000 homes that were burned in the last fire? So definitely there's a need out there.
Well, and there's a discussion, the Nextdoor app is something I'll get emails from. And sure enough, somebody was out there saying, you know, our, our son or son-in-law wants to come to the property. We're going to set him up in a camp trailer. We're going to make sure, you know, they, they're just plugged in and they're not using the plumbing. Is that okay? And according to our county code, it's not, you know, it's not, it's a, it's a accessory dwelling. And so people don't have a feel for, you know, those, the county code as it's published. You know, code enforcement happens after it's been there for a while. If nobody complains, it may just keep on going. But that's an environment we're in right now where people are asking, you know, scratching their heads. Is this okay or not? What's okay? How far can we go? So I, a neighbor in our neighborhood, I got a call one day saying that they were called because their friends came over for the weekend in the RV. And, you know, that's really not allowed either. I mean, it, it, our code is pretty clear on, you know, no second dwellings on the property. So the letter of the law could be enforced pretty tight if we're, so we, it's definitely the conversation of the day.
Yeah, but meanwhile, we have a, we have a bunch of people living in the shadows with, with accessory dwelling units already. And so, I mean, we, and it'll be really great to legalize those. So it's, yeah, it's a way that, you know, the way that, the way that regulations are currently being enforced or non-enforced is, it's complicated.
That's right.
Yeah.
And then there is the medical hardship where if you have health issues, you can get, you can actually legally get someone to live there. So, which is great. And then sometimes they'll seem like they go on for years.
But that's annual, yeah, that's annual.
Yes.
Information also. Is there any other, other items? Okay, with that, I think we do have executive session today. Is that correct? I'm making sure we're on the same page. Yep, so executive session for consideration of employment, which is ORS 1926602A.